This funding available to move forward on this project, so thank you for that.
That was brought up, what, a meeting or two ago?
Yes, yep.
Karen, did we give an approval on that, or was it just discussion?
It was discussion, and you all gave consent to move forward. It doesn't actually require a budget adjustment or anything like that from council. The money's already available, so.
Fund item four petitions or communications are unwritten. Do we have anybody signed up? Okay, before we read these rules, our engagement on this prior to people speaking. County ensure all electronic devices, including cell phones, are either turned off or set to silent mode. Out of respect for all attendees, we request the removal of hats and other head coverings during the meeting unless required for religious or medical reasons. Participants wishing to address city council are required to state their full legal name and for the official record. Please note the city council will not respond immediately to comments raised under petitions and communications. However, council or staff will address and follow up on all inquiries as appropriate. We ask each speaker to maintain a respectful and courteous demeanor, refraining from personal attacks and/or use of foul and abusive language. Civil discourse is appreciated and expected at all times. We request all audience members to respect others' rights by not causing noises or disturbances that could potentially disrupt proceedings of the meeting. I do have a couple of items here before we bring the first person on. Just for some information, I got this today, that the advocates against domestic assault thing is coming up. And I think it would be appropriate maybe to do a proclamation. They've asked me to go speak at that event next weekend, so if we can get some done. Also, we see this from Linda Baron, which is, she's part of the Trinidad-Los Angeles County Veterans Memorial Committee. Says, Dear City Council members, names all of us, considers the Trinidad-Los Angeles County Veterans Veterans Memorial Committee will host a luncheon for all veterans and their spouses and widows on Saturday, November the 11th, 2023, at 11:00 a.m. and Sebastian and Jim, we would like to invite you to participate with us as we honor those who have and are serving our country. We are anticipating another large turnout this year. If you have any questions, please feel free to contact me at 719-846-8223. Respectfully, Linda Baron, she's a Veterans Memorial Committee member. That's always a nice event, by the way. Start off, we have one person signed up, Amanda Court.
Hi, esteemed councilwomen and councilmen. I just wanted to give you an update on what's going on with women of Los Angeles County. We have an event on October 28th from 4:00, 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. We're doing a wine and cheese tasting at Main Street Live, and we're doing a silent auction. So here's a flyer on it. And what I am here about is because this is a silent auction, I have been soliciting a lot of items from different businesses around town. And I am asking for gift baskets. And if you look over at the table, I have two gift baskets over there. One is, oh, awesome, fantastic. There's two items, gift baskets on there. One is like a movie night, so there's some Starbucks hot chocolate, a couple of cups, different movies there, and a blanket. And the other one is a dog basket. So it's had a dog cookie cutter, it's got a dog treat maker, it's even got a dog pajamas. They're kind of themed around Christmas. So I would invite all of you, or some of you, a couple of you, to donate a gift basket that we can use as a silent auction item for that event that night. Think it's gonna be very fun. Michelle Miles is going to be doing the sommelier. She's gonna be acting as the sommelier that night and guiding people around wines and cheeses. So there's gonna be a lot of women there drinking, and they'll be, their pocketbooks will be open. So I'd love for anyone or all of you to donate some kind of silent auction item.
Do we have anyone, virtual ones that would like to speak tonight? Go on to item five, our consent agenda approval. Item five A, approve the regular meeting minutes of October the 3rd, 2023. B, adoption of resolution directing housing now affordable workforce housing incentive program applications to suspend the program until additional funding is made available. That was a recommendation by Mr. Hyman. Item C, approval of the bills in amount of $1,308,261.81. Item D, approval of payroll, October the 14th, 2023, to October the 27th, '23, in amount of $451,917.65. Entertained motion. So moved, in a second?
Second.
Call and vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item six, public hearings. To take public comment on the following. Six A, capital budget estimates is now open, Ms. Navarette.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. As required by charter, it's time for a public hearing on the 2024 budget. This budget copy has been made available since October 4th at the front desk and at the library. And now it's just open to anybody that might have public comments.
Anyone in the audience wants to speak concerning the capital budget estimates? In-house or online? Speak for or against? Mr. Ruder, do you have anything else to add to that?
Mr. Rer, no, not at this time.
Okay, hearing done. Do you want to give us the, that way the audience will know what the total amount was?
The total amount budgeted in the preliminary budget is $58,620,219. This amount is fluid. We are still updating and adding and subtracting amounts.
That was on the annual budget, what about the capital budget?
Oh, sorry. The capital is just a four-year plan.
Right.
So. It's four-year budgets. It's the four-year CIP plan, so it's just, they're just, yeah, there's no amount.
Mr. Rer, members of council, this is the tool we use to prioritize capital projects. So there's really no set amount. We, we can estimate what the projects might cost, but we really don't know that based on quantities, pricing, that type of thing, until we get deep into the project.
Hearing is now closed. Motion to approve the capital budget estimates. So moved, second?
Second.
Call and vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Item six B, the appropriation of the 2024 annual budget. Hearing is now open. Again, Ms. Navarette, I think you just want to reiterate that dollar amount.
Sorry, I apologize, I forgot about the capital. But anyway, the 2024 budget draft allocations amount to $58,620,219.
Council, have any questions concerning the annual budget? And you said that's still kind of fluid at this point in time?
We'll have some changes. Today I worked on the proposition HH. If the, if that were to pass, I believe we'd have to deduct about $120,000 out of the budget.
So this approval is just for this amount at this point in time?
At this time, yes.
Entertained a motion? Now it's closed for the hearing. Entertained a motion for the 2024 annual budget, in amount of $58,620,219? As it stands today?
I'm sorry, so moved, so moved.
Second?
Second.
Any other discussion? Call and vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, Mrs. Davis Business. First reading of an ordinance granting local landmark designation to the property described as Greenhouse Park subdivision. Parcel B, formerly known as Terry's West Block 13, dash 613, Arizona Avenue. City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado, and set in a hearing date. For consideration of said ordinance to 6:00 p.m. on November 8th, 2023. Need someone to introduce?
I will.
Okay. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
And the applicant in this particular case was Franklin Ashley and Crystal Pierce, doing the Malvernia Apartments, which is a wrap design. And, and council.
I'm glad they're seeking landmark approval. And it helps them with the budget.
No, no questions. And I know that sometime back, they came before us and talked to us about that, from what I understand. And I know, Ms. Booth is, were you here to talk about that, or?
I will speak on it briefly. The Historic Preservation Commission considered local landmarking of this property on October the 11th, and they forwarded a recommendation to city council that it be landmarked. In order to landmark locally, an ordinance is required. Because we have a five Tuesday month, they actually get to be on the next regular council meeting, which will be the day after election on Wednesday, November the 8th. And the representative is present. It's up to council whether you want to take testimony on it this evening and again on, on the public hearing evening, or if you want to just defer everything to the public hearing.
Also, have any thoughts on that? Thoughts tonight, or likely?
I say we defer.
Differ, yeah. Are you okay with that? Yeah, that's awesome, okay. So we will defer any public comment at this time from, until next council meeting. Call and vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item eight B, first reading of an ordinance granting local landmark designation to the property described, described as Greenhouse Park subdivision. Parcel A, formerly known as Terry's West Block 13, 101 Pine Street, City of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. Set in hearing date for consideration of said ordinance, said ordinance to 6:00 p.m. on November the 8th, 2023. Need someone to introduce?
I'll let him introduce.
Entertained a motion?
So moved.
In a second?
Second.
There again, that the applicant is Franklin Ashley and Crystal Pierce. Other is kind of the same thing, or we got?
Mayor and city council, yes, this is obviously a different property, same circumstances. This was also considered on October the 11th by Historic Preservation Commission, and they forwarded a recommendation that city council grant this local landmark designation. Public hearing would be on November the 8th. And again, there is a representative here if council chooses to hear any of that, but it is most appropriate to wait for the public hearing, so you hear all the testimony there.
Does council want to wait till the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. It is okay, all right? Call and vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Item C, first reading of an ordinance vacating a portion of an unused alley in Block 1. First bomb addition to the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County, Colorado. A buddy in 1006 Western, Jane Friedman, applicant, considering hearing date for consideration of said ordinance to 6:00 p.m. on November 8th, 2023. Need someone to introduce, please. I'll let him do so. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion? Karen?
The applicant unfortunately wasn't able to even join remotely this evening. She had, she had some personal business that took priority. So Planning Commission heard this application on October the 10th. It is a request to vacate a portion of an unused alleyway that abuts 1006 Western Avenue. Miss Friedman has, did it on your drawing that's in front of you this evening. Again, I would recommend council defer all of the public testimony until second reading, but Planning Commission did unanimously recommend city council approve the vacate.
Does council want to go ahead and defer until the regular meeting?
Yes.
Any other question? Call and vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Item D, approval of La Porta Business improvement district 2024 operating plan and budget. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, Ms. Navarette?
All right, as required by statute, La Porta Business Improvement District is required to submit its annual operating budget to council before, for by September 30th, and I believe we received it September 28th. You should have it in your packet. And I believe we have a representative from La Porta Bid online. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Navarette on this? This is a yearly report that we get, and minor changes is all there is to it that I've seen. Karen?
No questions.
Ms. Navarette, did you have any concerns about?
There's just been minimal activity that, we're just waiting for activity to begin. They are only collecting their property tax from their mill levy. It's about $20,000, but other than that, they don't have any significant activity. Once they do begin having activity, they will be required to have their own audit and submit it to us so that we can include it with our audit. Thank you.
No question, ma'am. What, what kind of activity would kickstart that?
I, I don't know, that would be a question for the bid, yes. We thought with the road being completed, our auditor was wondering if that's when activity would start, but.
Jim, do you have any comment on this?
Yes. The, basically, the revenues that we've received have not been that great. We tip-ham that our real estate arm has been flaunting a lot of the costs of public improvements in the district. They have to do a lot around the hotel. They have to do with Maricopa Road, which is completed. Some of the areas around there, as far as cleaning up the river, the old Trestle Bridge, that's a pedestrian walkway now. We just need, we haven't gotten that much in revenues. So as our revenues grow, then, you know, we'll, we'll start reimbursing, tip-ham it to some extent, but then somewhere down the road, we'll be looking potentially at a bond issue. But we need revenues to be able to service that debt. So that's kind of what's been slow in it. All of the businesses currently in there are businesses that we have created. So with the hotel opening, our revenue should be increasing significantly. You know, we basically have a 2% PIF, you know, a public improvement fee, and then we have 10 mils in property tax. We originally got authorized up to 50, but we, we're using, the 10 is really going to operating expenses. So, so that's what's, as I say, we start getting a little more revenue, then we'll, this thing will look like it's supposed to look, and our budget will be a little bit more concrete. So we've pretty much given you very similar what we provided last year. I do know that the property assessed value has gone up significantly. I believe it's gone up from about 1.49 million to about 2.3. So that, you know, in part helps us with collection of taxes. We pay more, but the, the bid, the business improvement district will collect a little bit more, too. So that's really where we're at right now. When we set this up, we did not try to bring in any other properties that weren't owned by us. We didn't want to impact any other businesses in the community at that point. So as I say, it's just a matter of us continuing our development, which will continue to raise revenue. And as the La Porta area, as we develop it further, we hope to have more retail and generate more taxes, both for the city and something then that we can then benefit from also. So hopefully that answers your question.
Yes, that's, any other questions for? Okay. Hearing done, call and vote, please.
DeBono?
Yes.
Griggo?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
Thank you, Tim, for that explanation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Consideration, item E, consideration of authorization for expenditure to Plan B Networks in the amount of $74,402 for IT infrastructure for security upgrades. Entertained a motion?
So moved.
Second. Mr. Wordy, what do you have?
Yes, sir. I'm looking for more money.
Yeah.
It's a small part of more that I need. Okay, so in 2020, the city put in the camera system from Plan B Networks at that time. In the three years' time, the company that makes the software has taken a different path. So the software that we purchased in 2020 no longer supported. And we have, with the addition of multiple cameras, we've exceeded the capacity of the original server. So the other part to that is we've had some security concerns with people loitering in stairwells and places of building where they're not supposed to be. So we did a two-part request to expand the server, get a larger, more powerful server. We're adding 10 cameras to City Hall building. Better cover the stairwell here, each of the hallways on all three floors. And there's two more cameras somewhere. Oh, in the, the outside bottom first floor exterior door. So we would add access control to the stairwell doors to keep, to better able to funnel people, like for city council meetings, they should be, sorry. Basically, they come in the first door, hit the elevator, come up here, and then nobody's out wandering the hallways. So we can't secure the building that way. Oh, the other two were intercom video cameras that we would place on the second floor door and the first floor door. So for instance, if it's a close, or not close, but more closely monitored council meeting, Kim, for instance, could sit here and wait for people to hit the doorbell down at the bottom, and we let people in. And it's a big push to increase the security for City Hall. In addition to replacing software that's no longer supported.
Questions?
So James, this Plan B Networks is out of Chicago, right?
No, they're based out of Espaniola, New Mexico.
Okay, so did the city seek any other bits for, any other security systems, like here locally?
So this is not the same as the alarm system. So this is strictly cameras and, excuse me, door access control.
That's it.
And that's it. And the original camera system, Comterra, purchased through Plan B Networks, was under their GSA contract back in, done in 2020. The community center camera system, surveillance system, was also purchased under the same GSA contract, so. No, we didn't go out to bid for any of the camera system because it's under the GSA contract. And it's really hard to get competitive. So for instance, the system we purchased in 2020, it's a camera surveillance system, but the capabilities of that system nowhere matches what we just replaced at that community center in terms of like video analytics. For instance, the new system, we can count number of people that come in and out of the building. So at the end of the night, when council's done with the meeting and everybody leaves, we can look at the video surveillance metrics and see that, yes, everybody that came in the building has left the building. In addition to all kinds of interesting things, facial recognition. For instance, I could take Steve and with him with a hat on and a picture of his back and run it through, and it would find every instance of, it, it measures the way you walk. Yeah, it's really creepy stuff, that's what I'm saying. As an IT person, it's really creepy stuff, but in terms of security, it's kind of cool.
You did an AI purchase?
It's an AI, yeah. It integrates AI with it.
Karen, do you have any questions?
So. So who's going to be responsible to make sure whoever comes in goes out?
Actually, I would expect that that would be a person sitting at this bench right here.
So they have to stay till the bid are in?
Not necessarily. You know, everybody can, oh, no, you can do it all from your phone. So you just, you pull it up when everybody's done and you guys are walking out. Kim, for instance, could stand right at the, go right to her car and see that everybody's out of the building.
I don't know if this is within your department, but what kind of security measures do we have during business hours? Does everybody have access without?
Yes. So right now, this building is completely open to the public. We keep the first floor finance door open and the second floor Anamis Street door open. The only one that's closed all the time is the parking lot, first, um.
Yeah, right.
West door.
The west.
The west door, I always get, you know, faced in the wrong way. So the west door stays closed, but the other two doors are completely open. That's, with this purchase, if you guys approve it, we'll include the two video doorbells. So in, on the off chance that we need to, we could lock down the whole building and selectively let people in, kind of much like we do at the police department.
And Mayor and Council, just a couple of important notes. So first of all, we, we don't want to inhibit the public's access to their local government. That's not the point in this at all. It's just striking that balance of keeping City Hall safe. If you've noticed on the second floor, we have very open spaces down there. There's staff that just sit out there and are very vulnerable. That's really not what most city halls look like anymore, especially contemporary ones. So we don't have any security as you walk in the building, similar to when you go into the courthouse, you have to go through a metal detector and, and work on that. So we don't really have anyone in monitoring right now who's coming in and out of the building. We, we want to be as accessible as possible, and the idea would be if someone rings the doorbell, we want them to come in. But we also want to make sure that they're not carrying a firearm or something like that that might be the intent to harm us. And then I think the big thing is on the question about who's exiting the building, that is a concern. But at least we'll know who's in the building to begin with and can monitor that and have a good semblance of who we've allowed into the, the building access-wise. One of the biggest concerns that I have that I think we want to kind of mitigate is the number of keys that we've given out to current and past employees because we've all been manual to this, this date. We've really never changed out the dead bolts in any of our locks or, or that type of thing. So theoretically, someone could get into the building because we don't know that they've made a copy of a key or that type of thing. And then the last thing I'll say is, we also want to certainly, on the utility billing side, that might be a completely different situation where we would allow direct, direct access without having to be buzzed into compared to utility bill. But we'd like to see some improvements on the first floor to at least limit access to staff once someone is in the building.
The world we live in now is a completely different situation. And I, you know, as long as staff feels safe.
So my concern for that is when Cheryl's working here late or Donna's working here late. The instance we had was two, two weeks ago and three weeks ago, I believe. We had an indigent person hanging out in the stairwell. So, and I don't know that anybody knew he was there until somebody happened to lock down the steps. So unless somebody's in those areas, we don't know that anybody's in those areas. I will add on the video analytics, it will detect handguns and weapons and so. If council would like, I can send you a list of all the analytics the system's capable of. It's pretty cool.
I don't want to be creepy.
You showed me some stuff on your phone that you had access to.
So that is for the alarm system. Let me pull this up real quick.
So even though, say, former employees have keys, do we change the access codes on a regular basis?
No, so that's two different things. So for instance...
I mean, not access code, I'm sorry, the alarm system.
And that's a great question.
Okay, so that ties in with, what do we show you here? I'll just bring it up and show you. So this is what we did with our security alarm system, and you can see, we have the annex building, and all the, all the city buildings that we've done so far are here.
Okay.
And this is a program called Resideo that we got from Tristar. So.
Does the police department monitor, do you have it monitored, the police department?
That's a good question. And give me one second.
So anybody can put that on their phone?
Yes. So for instance...
Is it authorized?
If I, if I pull up City Hall, you can see that it's currently disarmed, and I can arm the system from here. If you were to quit, I can change your access code from here. And the system that we had with Mr. Falsetto before, I was not able to do this. So in the event that somebody quit, we would have to go on that site and actually go through the keypad and reprogram the keypad to add a person or take a person out. So a whole lot of management overhead for an alarm system. You know, City Hall turnover is not that bad, but some of the utility departments, you know, we're, there's not a whole bunch of turnovers, but enough to increase the overhead. So from a management perspective, my goal has always been to, as best I can, centrally manage all of our systems. So the city doesn't have a huge network, but it's still good size, and, you know, one hundred and forty, one hundred and forty-seven employees or something like that.
One sixty-two.
One sixty-two now?
Yes.
Okay. So for one hundred and sixty-two employees, enough, it'd be a lot of round and rounds doing these individual reprogramming spots. So this, this system is amazing. If I get a sensor that goes out, I get an alert. If I know the battery on that motion sensor out there's gone, I get an alert and we get it changed. I didn't have that feature with Mr. Falsetto's system, so.
So you could change all of the, if somebody quits, you could change it?
And if somebody quits, it's the same thing with, what we're moving to with the key fobs. So I give you a key fob, and you're supposed to have access to this building, annex building, library. When you quit or lose the key fob or something, we can change it immediately. Again, I can do it through my phone. Or new person starts, Donna sends us the information, we get the new person added, and we get access to exactly where they need to.
Besides yourself, does anybody else have access to be able to change those?
To change the access control?
Yep.
Right now, it's Blaine and I, and Steve, we haven't. Actually, Steve set up as an administrator also, but we haven't really taught him how to use the system.
That's fine.
So there's, there's three of us. Oh, Kim Pelham at the police department. She's kind of my, my backup, backup assistant, so that if Blaine and I are not available, she can get in. So with our email system, access control, and the alarm system, she's the backup administrator. So with Mr. Ruda, we have four people that have access to it.
Right, good question.
Yeah, just on the police department, do they have access if something happens that night to the building and take the shit? That mean, that would be something that I could see you.
So for our police officers and our first responders, they have access to all the city buildings that we put in the access control so far. What do we have that, here, annex building, police department?
Fox.
Fox. So we're, that'll be the next request for next year, to finish out the rest of the buildings. But for the buildings we've done, our first responders can, they have key fob access, they carry them in the trucks, like the fire trucks.
The other question is, do you have funding for this, Cheryl? In our budget, how does this come out through?
We do have remaining funding in the capital budget.
Yeah. I mean, we needed support, that would be the issue that we need to get in.
Yeah, this, this whole push, and honestly, the price of this was way more than expected. When we did the initial camera system, we spent twenty-two thousand dollars for a server and cameras, and since 2020, prices have just gone through the roof. The server itself, out of this seventy-four thousand, the server by itself is twenty thousand dollars. When we purchased, because I included the quotes, or the, yeah, the quotes with this, when we purchased the server in 2020, I believe it was around six thousand dollars. So, you know, a few extra hard drives and fourteen thousand dollar increase. So the cameras are not that expensive, but the network, the server side of things have gotten very expensive.
Rather than what happened last time, or are they, the software support, what do we, do we have any assurance that Plan B has, will not be used yet to us?
No, ma'am. And it's not Plan B that did it. The original system we purchased was sold through Plan B. It's a company called Conterra. And Conterra's been in business since the late eighties, nineties. They just made a business decision, their software is still available, but it doesn't, it doesn't have the features we were looking for. So they've taken a more robust software and pared it down to something that's, it's a very basic software.
So what I'm driving at is, are we going to get software updates with this? Are we going to have to continually buy new software?
No. So like we did with Conterra, there's a yearly support and maintenance fee that goes along with it. I can't give you those figures right offhand, because I don't know, I won't know them until next year. But it's based on per-camera license, and it's actually, I know it's not that high. Conterra was really cheap, which is why I went with it originally. Our total cost of ownership was less expensive. I think we were paying, I want to say about six hundred dollars a year for our licensing. I expect that through Salient, that's the new software, I want to say we're probably around twenty-five hundred to three thousand a year for support maintenance. And that's one of the cheap ones.
Kind of got what we paid for. We kind of got what we paid for.
We did. We, it's been a good program, it worked for us. It's just things have changed, and we're needing new stuff that their old software doesn't support.
Thank you.
Look, I'm just, thanks for the upgrades.
You're welcome.
We need to get entrance in the future. So we're going to be installing a key fob entrance on the two doors you set for.
We already have that, we have it on all three doors. So we have seven doors in City Hall that are on key fob access right now. So we have all three external doors, Florin Anita's, the billing office, two doors, and Kathy Falsetto's door. Yeah, I think that's it.
How do they behave on power failure?
So we have a battery backup that runs the, the door controller. In the event that we lose power, there's a battery backup for the door controller, and that electrical circuit is also tied into the generator that runs at the annex building. So in the event we lose a lot of power, it'll switch over and pull power from that generator.
Okay.
One of my next asks will be a generator for this building.
Maybe for Christmas. So the question is, you mentioned that down in the billing area that they may have direct access, but the rest of the doors, they're going to need to be buzzed in, is that?
No, well, so we can handle, one of the things we had in, in the height of COVID, 2020, 2021, is the billing was locked down, and not so much for Kim, but Desiree and Linda V. Hill or Audra, somebody would have to get up and go to the door and let somebody in. So it was, it was horrible on productivity, because it's interrupting your workflow. So the new system, the Salient system we're looking at, it, everything ties in together with our door access control and camera system and video doorbells. So you can see who's walking up, you can see who pushed the button, you can remotely open the door, any of the doors. Conceivably, you could do any of the doors. But like Kim or Desiree, whoever's on door duty that day, would have selective access to certain doors. So in the event that we need to lock down the building for whatever reason, that's the other thing with the door access control system we have, let's say we get a call from the police department, says, hey, there's an active shooter out somewhere. On my phone, one button, I can lock down the whole building, which I cannot do at this particular point.
The next question I have is, and I think it was brought up briefly, you know, we have other doors, like bathroom doors, utility doors, how are we going to watch those that people are not staying in there?
So that's part of the counting thing. Part of this upgrade project will include a camera in each hallway, so it covers the bathrooms, the stairwell door on both sides, and the offices. And we can, we can go on the video analytics software and tell it where we want to watch for people going in and out, and you can track that as deep as you want.
Now, that's creature stuff, all of them. All the other doors that, you know, are pretty much available, or some of them that maybe have keys, but maybe other people may have keys.
We have talked about potentially putting doors on the hallways on the first floor to keep people from going back into the stairwells there with key fob access as well, but I figured we'd do the same thing without having to change the flow of people that we bring in additional construction costs. So we just do it with cameras and key fobs.
Well, the whole thing boils down to is safety for our employees, pretty much, and even the public.
Yeah. And the public. And the council.
Especially the council.
Any other questions?
No.
No.
Any other questions? Call the vote please.
Debona?
Yes.
Griego?
Yes.
Aldo Tree?
Yes.
Shu?
Yes.
Thurman?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes.
All right, you all. Be me up, Scotty.
One of these days, Mr. Worley, there's going to be a little robot that comes down and says, my name is James Worley, and I'm your IT professional.
He already is that right now.
AI junior.
AI junior.
The council reports.
Other than what you stated, Mayor Rico, the committee, the Los Angeles County Veterans Council and the Los Angeles County Committee are kind of two different organizations, but you mentioned that the dinner, November eleventh, eleven o'clock, eleven, eleven, eleven's going to take place. But other than that, from the Los Angeles County Veterans Council, anything to report tonight?
I, I attended the meeting with Attorney General Weiser last week on Wednesday, and, you know, you, you understand that there's a drug problem in Trinidad and that we've got to do something about it, but just coincidentally, there's a friend of mine who has had issues, and there's a point for my, my story, but has had issues with cocaine and heroin. And she finally got her child straightened out, got her in a methadone clinic, so she's off heroin, she's off cocaine, but she has to travel from Trinidad to Pueblo. I'm thinking once a week, and they carpool with other people that are in treatment, and it's a sad situation, because some people are very anxious, there's different personalities in the car. Well, evidently, what happened is there was something that went on with the methadone clinic in Pueblo, somebody passed away, wasn't on their methadone and passed away. They canceled the methadone clinic in Pueblo. So nobody's that, that is treatment in Trinidad is not getting methadone treatment in Pueblo either. So she's concerned that if something doesn't happen, that her daughter will backslide into using hard drugs. But the point is, when Attorney General Weiser was here, I mean, I, I'm thinking there's federal money out there that maybe could assist. I think it might be a good project for this council to see if we can, you know, work on it to get a methadone clinic in Trinidad. So these people, I mean, I, the way the system's set up now for people in Trinidad, it's almost destined to fail, you know, because they have to travel that distance with people they don't know. They're in a stressful situation anyway, so I don't know if that's a practical thing to do, Steve, but, you know, when we're talking about the unhoused in our process with that program, I think it, it all blends together somehow.
Point on that, you know, Ms. Lee, what do you like, and I don't know if this would be someplace to look into, but the people that are handling that twelve fifteen money for recidivism, I don't know if there's anything that they could do, you know, where it was under, where they're at is the, or Doctor on First Street, Dentist?
He's in Trinidad Safe, right?
Yeah, Trinidad Safe. Check with him, I don't know if there's anything that they could do or check into.
There's absolutely things that they can do, and people do get directed to keeping Trinidad safe, and there's also a mobile methadone clinic that comes down, the name's escaping me right now what it's called, and there's also other resources that they can get through crossroads that'll send them or take them to a different place in Pueblo. So there's other options, but I think we're, we're starting to see more of what you're talking about, try to come to Trinidad.
Is there any kind of methadone treatment in Trinidad? Available in Trinidad? Is there a reason why people travel to Pueblo?
There's a mobile treatment methadone clinic that comes down here, and there's other options, but I think you're right, I think we need to make our drug rehabilitation more robust within Los Angeles County in general, but I think that there is, there's strides in that direction through other facets. I don't think it's something that you would necessarily have to do.
Right. And Mayor Council, I think this is certainly something we should bring up for future conversations. I just wanted to point out, this is not an effort I think the city should do alone, and I know you won't get that, I just wanted to point that out for the record. I think we would rely heavily on our partners in the community to help out with this effort. But noted, and we will definitely do our part to see what we can do, and I, I think it's very appropriate for us to start looking at funding sources to help out with the situation.
I interviewed Marcy Key. Would you turn that safe and she talked it up and something? That would be someplace where, yeah, for that person that you're talking about, maybe she could do.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Karen, anything else?
No, I'm sorry.
Don't, I don't have anything. We've got meetings coming up, it's a couple of weeks. I emailed Marcy Key and Debbie Berry, Deb Berry.
I also got to attend a meeting with Attorney General Weiser, and it was very good. One of the things he mentioned is that part of the opioid settlement involved the allocation to funds around the state, and we're in the sector that's part of Pueblo.
Yes.
And so Felix, Commissioner Felix Lopez is the one who's, I believe, the county's representative to that, so that's something we should talk with him about, to see if he's working to bring that down here, because that's under his, I think, his purview as a member of that committee. Arts and Culture Met, and they made some strides, they planted the Mount Rose is down as you're coming in the entrance down there, and that has taken a while, but those will be there through the winter. And the plaques that have been prepared for all the artwork around town are being installed. So that's mostly the news, they're working on next year's budget.
Nothing from Parks and Rec? We only do our meetings on some of that stuff.
I have no update, Mayor.
Okay. I attended the, there was an event at the Mitchell Museum, they just talked about some of the issues that they've got, and it was just kind of an event that the public was invited, but they also stressed some of the issues that they are talking about, and I, Cody, I recommend to him to come to City Council to get on maybe a work session, or just come and talk to us exactly what they're seeing as.
And I, Cody, I recommended to him to come to City Council to get on maybe a work session or just come and talk to us exactly what they're seeing as far as what they're trying to do. Because they do, as we know, for many years now, there's some concerns about maintaining the place. So I asked him to get with Audra and maybe set up a time when he could come and talk to the council about the Mitchell Museum. I also attended the Mr. Weiser's, AG Weiser's meeting last week. The one thing that I'm concerned about, I read this a while back, I know there were, it was one of the major drug pharmaceutical companies that is now contesting the amount of money they got paid back. I can't remember which one it was.
I can't do either, but he did say.
But there's, there's, they're trying to backtrack on what they, what they're supposed to pay out. So that may impact the amount of money that may be coming to all the areas. I attended the CML meeting last week virtually, and I'm not sure if all of you, I mean, I had to send it to Steve, and he was supposed to send it out to.
I'll get it out to you guys.
And then there are all the member posts and proposals. One of the things that's of kind of concern is that they're after tax reporting on, on all the lodging taxes. And they want, something like they're just, there's like, in this thing, there's like three or four items that they're talking about. And they're different, they're different bills. And they just report it, I'm not sure why, but anyway, they.
Want to take our money. That's what it is, it's probably what they're planning to name, let's put a tax on.
But anyway, they're, they're talking about it, about just, and keeping the state informed of the amount of money I guess we're receiving through the lodging tax, is what they're, that's what they're talking about. And just for council's information, as you know, this last week, I don't know if you heard that, the president was supposed to be here yesterday? And I got a message from Senator Bennett's office asking me to, to go, but of course, then he canceled because of all the stuff that's going on in the Middle East. And they're planning on, he's planning on still coming to Colorado. Whether it happened this year or not, I don't know, but they had asked me to participate and go to that. So I'll call the council on that. That is all I have. Mr. Ruder, what do you have for us?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, just a couple of things. Town hall tomorrow night? So really excited for that. We will be presenting on, I'll be presenting on some of the accomplishments of our departments, and then the mayor will also be presenting on some of the initiatives that we're currently working on. Mostly, it's a, a good time for us to hear from our residents and hear some feedback from them. So that'll be at 6 o'clock tomorrow night at Space to Create. So if you all can attend, I think it'd be beneficial for you to be there. Obviously not required, but please come if you can. I wanted to point out First Street, I don't know if you guys have been by there recently, but it looks amazing. Way ahead of schedule, very good progress. We're very, very happy with RMS, and they're doing a tremendous job for us. And we expect to be able to do the ribbon cutting on that project, hopefully way ahead of time for, for that. We had a meeting today with the Army Corps of Engineers, they came up from Albuquerque to talk about our water tank rehabilitation process. The biggest issue is that our 5 million gallon tank that's on Army Corps land over at the state park is, there is some disagreement about the easement and what was done in the past. So we're trying to scour our records to see what we can find out on that. But the big thing for us is to get a new easement to be able to put a backup tank so we can drain the original one and do the rehabilitation. They're telling us it could take up to, you know, a year plus just to get that easement. And then we had proposed a land swap as well, they're saying that would be nine years out. So we've asked them to think creatively and see if we can work on that. And obviously, protecting our drinking water is something that should be key to the fore for, for all of us. So we'll be working very hard to see what we can do. I did talk with our water director, Mark V. Hill, about what is, are we in dire straits? Are we in, you know, a major concern? And right now, fortunately, no. We do have some time, but we, we also want to light a fire under the federal government to really assist us on this project. So those are my updates for tonight. And, oh, one more real quick, apologies.
Oh, did you? A question if I may.
Sure, please.
On the First Street project, I know there's some interactions with the courthouse concerning ADA for the election. Do you have any updates specific to that?
Yeah, our public works director, Bob, we're making sure that we have access for ADA. I believe the spot where the judges park on the back of the courthouse will be available for parking for ADA for, for voting purposes. So we'll, we'll make sure that we do our part to make sure everybody can get in there for voting and accessibility, but great question. And then the last thing I just wanted to mention, we have our legislative roundtable that's coming up on November 15th, is that right? It's now that Thursday?
It's 16th, I believe.
16th, at 5 o'clock PM. So just want to point that out for, for you all to get that on your calendars.
And we're going to kind of keep that, you know, in the past, we've had some businesses that have reported, but this year, we're keeping it more toward true legislation.
Yeah.
So we'll have people like federal delegation, state delegation, other people, City Council that will report on what's going on. It might be, we will be there to report on what's happening or upcoming with the state legislature this year.
And Mayor, Council, thank you. And one of the things that, you know, I really want to have a discussion with you all on in the next month before that, is just talking about any legislative priorities you can think of that we want to express to our representatives. So if you'll start thinking about that, if there's, there's things that you think about state law wise that might be a priority for us that you'd like to see in our community, we really want to take the opportunity to tell them, here's what our priorities are and here's what we'd like to see happen in this next session.
One of the things, and a couple of weeks ago, you know, you and I met with Ty Winter and bring up a couple of those items and see if there's, you know, something that's something that maybe that we want to introduce at the state level.
Yep.
The, you talked about the Corps of Engineers issue. Would the, our federal delegation be of any help?
Mayor, I think it's worth having that conversation, yeah. So we'll come up with some suggestions on how to move forward, but for, for most issues, we, we have the luxury of time, but when it comes to our drinking water, we just want to be diligent about being proactive.
And we can talk to, you know, our senators, homeless women representatives and see if that's something that they can help us with or not, I don't know.
Absolutely, good idea.
Because we may not have nine years.
That's exactly right.
Okay, Mr. Downs is not here tonight, so with that, motion to adjourn. Second.
Third.
Hold on, please.
Dubonno?
Yes.